Thanks, and welcome to the Wednesday, August 9th, 2023, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Woodyear.
Present.
Commissioner Aparna. Commissioner Aparna, can you hear us? We seem to have a we seem to have a problem with Teams not hearing hearing the any sound. Chris, can you hear me? Okay, we're trying to get this resolved. Can you hear me now on Teams? Great.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Aparna. Are you with us? We're doing roll call.
Present.
Okay.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Commissioner Sheffrin.
Present.
Vice Chair Weston.
Present.
And I am Chair Sherri Nichols. We're hopeful that Commissioner Nueva Camino will be joining us. You may have noticed if you're joining us that we have a parking issue tonight, so with the concert going on, so. I will call the meeting to order. Before we approve the agenda tonight, I need to make an amendment to the agenda where it says on item five that we will approve its recommendation and report. We will need to amend that to say, I want to make a motion to amend that to say gain community of feedback. We're not actually going to approve a recommendation and report tonight, so I move to change item five on the agenda to say gain community feedback.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and now I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, now we have the we have a couple of meeting minutes and summaries. We have the July 12th, 2023, meeting minutes and the July 26th, 2023, meeting summary. Need a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those are approved.
So far, we have only one person signed up for items from the audience.
Okay.
And that is Justin B.
Okay, this is the point where we take feedback from items from the audience. If you'll go to the mic and state your name and address, and you'll have approximately three to five minutes to talk to us.
Okay.
On anything that's not a subject of the public hearing tonight.
Okay, so my name is Justin Bruning. Address 156 by 4, Northeast 93rd Way. It's not part of the hearing sections that you have listed there. It's about Section 8 specifically, kind of related to that. So I had two comments regarding that. One was, I was in favor of there was basically urban commercial forms for like retail in general, just highly supportive of that, just densifying that area. I guess that's about it for that. And then the second thing was, I work over in that manufacturing area. I bicycle there every day. The general area around there is relatively unsafe to bicycle, so I'm just like hoping that as part of when we're developing that or changing areas out there, we kind of focus on making sure it's connected to the rest of the bicycle network. Because I have several coworkers who live in downtown Redmond, and they do not bicycle over there just because of its safety issues. And it's kind of silly, because I know there's a lot of parking issues over there during the day because of that. And it's like, you live in downtown Redmond, and it would be very nice to be able to get people, more people to bicycle over there. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your feedback. That's it for items from the audience? Great. Okay, then we will move on to Redmond 2050 Centers Element Public Hearing and Study Session. And Becky Frye, can you lead us off?
Good. Thank you. For this evening, we are just asking the commissioners if you would like to add anything else to your issues matrix, or if you would like to close the public hearing. We did receive an email from Tom Markle reiterating his comments that he made verbally, and we got a second email today from Ms. Katie Kendall, who had made a comment, reiterating her comments about OV2, and mentioning that the link in the packet didn't reflect it. And I do want to assure you that that edit has been made, and I will correct the linking so that folks can access the version that does show the language that she asked the Planning Commission to strike, that we agreed at the last meeting to go ahead and strike. That is actually made, and I will just correct the link so that it's pointing to the correct document. But if you'd like, I can pull up the issues matrix if you'd like to add anything new. Otherwise, the only thing before you tonight is if you would like to close the public hearing. We are not requesting a recommendation at this time, because our planning director, Carol Helen, has asked if we go ahead and start to assemble these things a little bit later. So go ahead and get all the way through to the point where you're ready to make a recommendation, put it aside, and then we'll come back to you later for a series of recommendations. So we're not asking for that this evening. We're just asking if you want to go ahead and close the public hearing or continue your study session.
Okay. Do commissioners have anything, I mean, the I'll see, Commissioner Aparna has her hands, hand up, so we'll let her.
Thanks, Sherri, thanks, Becky. I just have one question. When we get back to this, would we be discussing the incentive package with the bonus, the points and so on at that time?
This is only the policies, so the incentive package will come to you as a part of the regulatory review.
Okay.
So along those lines, we had originally scheduled the public hearing for the incentives on August 30th. We are pushing that date out, so it will no longer be on August 30th. There's some additional work that needs to be done before we're ready for that. So we will reschedule the public hearing for the items that we had as part of Overlake Package 3, which is the Green Building and the Center Program. They tie together so closely that we need to keep them together, but we'll reschedule the public hearing for that particular topic. But that is not subject to the public hearing yet. That is, all we're looking at today is the public hearing for the policies.
Okay, thank you.
So all the items that are currently on the issues matrix are closed.
Correct.
Did you have something, Commissioner Weston?
I just wanted to ask why, or if there's any disadvantage to leaving the written comments open.
It just keeps the public record open.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
You can always reopen it at a later date if you choose to reopen it, just but from a record-keeping standpoint, it's cleaner, just go ahead and close it.
That makes so much sense, thank you.
Are there any items that commissioners would like to add to the issues matrix at this time? We did get the email today from Tom Markle, which was the last of the written topics. So if it's, if the commissioners in agreement, in agreement, I will go ahead and close public comment, written public comment for this, and close the public hearing. And we'll come back to this when it's ready for a recommendation.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, so we move on to Redmond 2050 Housing Element Public Hearing and Study Session. Ian, kick us off.
We have four individuals who would like to provide verbal public comment on this item.
Okay, do you want, do you have a, do you want to, do you have a presentation before we start the public hearing, or?
I have the documents and the issues matrix, but no presentation.
No presentation, okay. Then I will open the public hearing, and we can start the testimony.
First up, we have David M.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm David Morton. I live in Redmond, 98053. Drawing from the early version of the Department of Commerce's Climate Element Planning Guidance, the following is a list of measures, policies, and actions that could be addressed in Redmond's housing element. First, implement site designs for new residential buildings that optimize solar access, ensuring properties receive sunlight unhindered by neighboring structures. Second, develop or adapt design standards that integrate exterior building features to mitigate climate change impacts. Examples are awnings for weather protection and cool or green roofs for insulation. Third, require new subdivisions to bury electricity transmission lines, mitigating storm and wildfire damage risks. Fourth, ensure buildings are designed and constructed sustainably, minimizing environmental impacts and bolstering resilience against extreme weather events. Fifth, enforce design and construction of residential buildings and surrounding areas that reduce stormwater runoff and pollution through effective treatment. Sixth, promote the use of low-carbon building materials in new constructions and retrofits, curbing embodied carbon emissions. Seventh, adopt fire resilience criteria for developments in high-risk wildfire zones to enhance safety and minimize wildfire threats. Eight, require electric heat pumps and restrict natural gas in new residential construction while aligning building codes with state energy regulations. Ninth, design buildings for passive survivability to maintain habitable temperatures during power outages. Tenth, encourage modular building practices that allow flexibility, renovation, and deconstruction in response to changing needs and climate impacts. Eleventh, expand electric vehicle infrastructure, ensuring comprehensive placement of charging stations. Twelfth, require additional net-zero greenhouse gas emission features for all new residential structures. Thirteenth, integrate renewable energy sources for electricity and heating in new and existing residential buildings. Fourteenth, develop low-energy use standards and building code compliance for residential structures, potentially aiming for certifications like Living Building, Energy Star, or LEED. Fifteenth, offer incentives for improving energy efficiency in existing residential buildings. Sixteenth, prioritize adaptive reuse of existing buildings, reducing emissions by avoiding demolition and new construction. And finally, prioritize preservation and weatherization of housing in overburdened communities, considering the risk of tenant displacement by green gentrification. Integrating these measures into the housing element could significantly contribute to Redmond's sustainable development goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Pat S. and Neely M.
Hello, planning commissioners. I'm Pat, this is Neely, and we're the co-lead pastors at Overlake Christian Church, 9900 Willow's Road, Northeast. We've been following the great work on Redmond 2050 and are excited about Redmond's future. In particular, we enthusiastically, we enthusiastically support the proposed policy 80-12 and the associated regulations regarding affordable housing development on properties that are owned or controlled by a religious organization. We urge the Planning Commission to recommend that city council adopt these provisions. Policy HO-12 and the regulations would implement state law passed in 2019 and support the provision of affordable housing on property owned or controlled by a religious organization. This would help to address the significant gap in Redmond's housing supply for long-term affordable housing for people in need, such as those who experience housing insecurity, displacement, or homelessness. This policy continues Redmond's longstanding commitments to increase, to increasing the supply of affordable housing while working collaborative, collaboratively with a variety of agencies and nonprofit partners.
Overlake Christian Church highly values our partnership with the City of Redmond and others to care for people who are struggling so that our community can grow stronger together. Having more affordable housing located close to jobs and services is fundamental to people being able to achieve stability and health in their lives. Over the past seven years, in partnership with the City of Redmond, we have assisted about 100 individuals move from our safe parking program for those who are living in their vehicles into affordable housing. We continue to witness firsthand the transformative impact that a safe and stable place to call home makes in the lives of people. Faith communities in Redmond and surrounding areas have long been important partners for serving those in need of shelter, food, health services, supportive friendships, and other essentials. We believe the proposed policy HO-12 and the associated regulations are a critical next step in our shared commitment to help people regain stable and safe housing with access to nearby supportive services, employment, and educational opportunities.
And we just want to say thanks for serving the community, and we're grateful we get to do it together.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a remote comment from Guillermo R., and I will call them now.
Hello, welcome to the Planning Commission. You're online with us, and you can speak to the public hearing on the housing element.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Guillermo Rivera, and I work at Eastside For All. Today, I'm also representing the Eastside Housing Equity Coalition. Eastside For All is a racial equity and social justice organization based in East King County. We bring forward input from communities that are underrepresented on councils and other decision-making bodies. We know that affordable housing creates more stable and thriving communities. When families have secure housing, create stability that foster community connections and promotes civic engagement. Affordable housing also helps communities to mitigate displacement and gentrification that often disproportionately affect communities of color and immigrants. Affordable housing creates diversity and enrich cultural communities. We talk a lot with communities of color and immigrants. Many of them are under the 50% average media income and below. They mention how hard it is to buy houses. I'm sure you also hear that. So many people need to continue renting for years to come. Many people have to move out of the city or move in with other families. Families are looking to live in Redmond. Families want to live where they work, where they go to worship, where their kids go to school. Communities continue mentioning how large number of houses have been built in our area, but new houses costs are more than a teacher's salary, and for those who work in preschool, as a caregiver, as a cell associate, as a receptionist, as a clear copies. We know that there is a big need for housing for people with lower incomes. We make a survey, we coordinated a survey last spring. 59% of the 101 residents in Redmond say that they will support middle housing. I want to share really quick two quotes from that survey. A 45 to 65-year-old person told us, "Housing is becoming more and more expensive. I am afraid that younger generations cannot afford to buy their own house at all. We need a change." Another person that was 26 to 35 years old said, "My family and I live in Redmond, and I feel that over the time, the price of rent and home values has gone up a lot. We would like to live here for the convenience of shops and good schools, but it is difficult to buy houses, and there is increasing construction of apartments of houses of high prices. The jobs are better here, but will have to move away in the future if we want to buy a house." So for this reason, that is why I encourage you to have a discussion today with the lens of equity. Creating more affordable housing will help to create more equity in Redmond. I want to thank you for your time, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Next, we have Cliff C., and I will call them now.
Hello, this is Cliff.
Welcome to the Redmond Planning Commission meeting. You can now speak to us on the public hearing for the Redmond 2050 Housing Element.
Yes. Hello, planning commissioners. I am absolutely honored to be able to have a moment to speak with all of you today. As I mentioned before, my name is Cliff Coson. I am the Advocacy and Policy Manager for Habitat Humanity of Seattle, King, Kett, S. Counties. And I'm here speaking with you tonight because the housing elements, as opposed for a 2050 comprehensive plan, I think goes a long way to eliminating barriers for building affordable housing, but there are a couple of tweaks that I think that need to be addressed. So when it comes to making sure that there are provisions for incentivizing affordable housing, having a fee-in-lose program and adding a fee-in-lose program to the plan, I think is a useful tool for alternative compliance that will support affordable housing, particularly nonprofit affordable housing development in the city, which is so desperately needed. And we've been, we've been building affordable homeownership opportunities for about 37 years throughout the region. So when it comes to, when it comes to building out affordable home, housing opportunities, we know it's a multifaceted process that takes community, and luckily enough, we work with community to do that. So apropos of that, we're really very passionate about making sure that there are enough units. And with that, the parking requirements put on some affordable rental, some affordable rental units that it may disincentivize, may disincentivize more housing. And while I get like parking concerns, then making sure that there is, there are, it's close to as, it's close as possible to no parking requirements for affordable housing, whether it's rental, whether it's homeownership. So builders can simply add more units and make sure that there are more opportunities for folks. So I just offer these thoughts, as well as just the hope that you take these things in consideration, as well as think, consider how can we add more to the affordable housing stock in the City of Redmond, as well as how we can make sure that the entire continuum is supported so everyone can have a safe and affordable, decent place to live, as we say at Habitat. Sounds cheesy, but it's something that we passionately care about. So yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And that is all the members of the public who have requested to speak on this item.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yeah.
Real quickly, Ian, do you think it's possible to request Guillermo's testimony in writing? It was, for me, anyway, very difficult to hear him.
Absolutely, I will follow up and see what they can do.
Before we move on, I quickly want to note that Commissioner Nueva Camino had notified us in advance that she would not be here tonight, and she is excused. Okay, so now we move into, so at this point, we will close the verbal portion of the public hearing and keep the written part open. And we will move into study session.
Thank you, Chair Nichols. So we will go through the issues matrix that we discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting. The first item is number two, the policy for impact of short-term rentals. Per the direction of the Planning Commission, staff added more narrative components and linked it with market conditions, but did not add a specific policy directing city action on this topic. Any questions?
Commissioner Aparna?
Thanks, Chair, thanks, Ian. So I, I think, I think it's fine to add in the narrative, but would it be possible to add this in the report to council, that they consider something a little more, how do I put it, meaty in, in the report, as to consider it seriously as a, something that we could add or further down the road?
Absolutely. In the future, when the Planning Commission does make its formal action on this item, any individual Planning Commissioner can attach kind of their thoughts to go with the report that goes to council.
Okay, so, okay, great, thank you. So we could close this then?
Can do. This was the question about whether or not short-term rentals regulate corporate housing. And prior discussion at the last meeting, no, they do not. And this has been reflected in the staff response.
This is assigned to Commissioner Nueva Camino, but the thing, note actually says it was Commissioner Van Nyman that asked the question. So we have a, Commissioner Van Nyman, was this your question?
I don't think so. I think it's accurately reflected there with.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think we can, I think this answers the question, though it's a pretty straightforward question of fact. I think we can probably go ahead and close it, even though Commissioner Nueva Camino's not here tonight.
Number four was the discussion about promoting housing that had more bedrooms, and we wanted to communicate that it, the desire to accommodate larger households without actually using the phrase "families," and staff has updated HO-7 accordingly.
Commissioner Weston?
I thought this was a great solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Close this one.
Just to double check, so I have the commission's informed and enthusiastic consent to close this item?
As usual, yes, thank you.
Perfect. Then we move on to the technical appendix issues. The first component was about identifying internet accessibility, and we did find some data on that, and we added that into the appendix.
Awesome, close this one, too.
Home tenure by year, this is the second issue for the technical appendix, and we tried to build that narrative showing the different tenure rates over time and how the different housing stock came online to draw that connection between the two.
Really appreciate this. So this is, I think it's something that's obvious to a lot of us, but it's really nice to have the data to support it. So just pulling that story together is great, and we can close it.
Thank you. Number three was a discussion about the data that we found in the initial draft, which showed zero people living in boats, RVs, and vans. And so we decided to move forward with a one-year AS, ACS estimate, which provided what we think is a more reflective set of data for the current times.
So I really appreciate this. So I really appreciate this. I have one additional source that I thought you might want to consider. Lake Washington School District does a fairly good job through its guidance departments of collecting information about children in the school district by school that don't have housing. And so you can actually go to see like how many children are reported as not being housed in Redmond High School. You can see it at the middle school level. You can see it at the elementary school level. It's definitely not zero. And that's over the course of a year. So it's, it might fluctuate through time, but that's individual children who are impacted. So that might be a thing to at least provide a link to. That's all public data on the OSPI site, the state OSPI site.
It's not a one-to-one mapping to the city of Redmond, but still.
No, not at all. But actually, since we do know the attendance areas of the different schools, for example, everyone who attends Redmond High School, I believe, is a student who calls Redmond home, whether or not they're housed in like an actual address in Redmond.
There are people who attend Redmond High School who are also not in Redmond.
Right. So it's not perfect, but it helps drive home that point that it's not zero.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I really appreciate this, and I'm willing to close it without keeping it open.
Okay.
Can do. And that was it for the technical items. As a reminder, we are not going to discuss regulations as part of this public hearing. The regulations will be considered more fully at a date in the future.
Are there any additional items that people, commissioners want to add to the? Commissioner Parna has her hand up.
Yeah, one for the technical appendix. I think the Overlake Church pastors are here, and they did mention that they've helped people. So that's also an indirect data point to understand the number of people in cars and vans, maybe, I don't know. But they're in the audience, so make hay while the sun shines, right? So that was one comment. And I had comments about the regulations more as questions, which are broader discussions when the regulations come up. Is this a good time to kind of ask those questions, Ian?
We're still developing a project timeline for when we can expect that. So I would request that we address those questions at a later time when we have more firm answers for the commission.
Got it. And one last thing on the HO24 policy. I think we mentioned this before, but it starts with maintain a posture. And please remove the word posture. It sounds wrong.
Can do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for this topic? Commissioner Weston?
Can I just ask when we'll see this again? Do we see this again?
Oh, yeah, this is just the first touch of this.
Okay, perfect.
We'll see this over and over again.
At least twice more. Okay, thank you.
This, this was just our first touch. Remember, there were all those things they said, yeah, we'll put that in the next draft. Okay.
Thank you so much.
One other piece, piece of housekeeping that I neglected to do at the beginning. I do want to note the staff who are present with us tonight, who extended their workday to help us out tonight. Joining us tonight, we have Chris Wyatt, Seraphie Allen, Jeff Churchill, Becky Fry, Kim Dietz, and Ian Lefkort. Okay, now we'll move on to Redmond 2050 Overlake Zone Regulations Public Hearing and Study Session. And Becky, Kim, who's kicking us off here?
I'll kick it off. I'll just, I'm going to share the list from last time. Here we go, just, so we have, for reference, these are the items that are going to public hearing this evening. We have not prepared a new PowerPoint, but we do, I have pulled up the old PowerPoint. If there are any questions, we can pull up the information. If you'd like to open a public comment, or if you'd like to get an overview of the items before you open public comment, I'll follow your direction.
I think I will go ahead and open the public hearing.
Great, thank you.
We have two community members who signed up for verbal, and they are both remote. So I will call Katie Kay first. It seems like they are not picking up, so I'll go ahead and call the second individual who signed up, which is Sherri F.
Good name.
Hello?
Hi, welcome to the Planning Commission. You can now speak to us at the public hearing for the Overlake Zone Regulations.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't plan on taking up very much of your time this evening. And I want to preface this, this, before I start, that it's not only the regulation on, on the zoning, but I do have a few other comments, just in general, on items that have been tabled for the future. You know, we are not discussing tonight, you know, the AMI and H are potential changes, mixed use versus standalone on multifamily, the parking credits for affordable housing. But these are all issues that, you know, that are being, that are being put forth that, in my mind, if we're trying to encourage development, making all of these changes all at once, from a developer standpoint, is going to not encourage development. I think it's going to have the counter effect. And so, you know, as, you know, as a, a property owner who is going to, is looking at developing, I just feel that, you know, these, all of these changes coming all at once in this package, again, could have the opposite effect of what you're trying to do. So that, that's kind of really where I'm talking, you know, coming at with the land use on the master plan development. That regulation itself is, you know, a big one, and it's, you know, required for, even as far as I'm, I'm aware, even developments that are smaller. And that's, you know, some of the, all of this is going to put additional costs. So that's really just my comment is, is that I think that, that there's a lot of stuff being, being thrown together in a short period of time. And I think that if we're, you're going to accomplish the goals, it's got to be done, I think, a little bit slower.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to retry the first person?
Please. So this is Katie Kay.
This is Katie.
Hi, Katie. You're on with the Redmond Planning Commission, and you can address us on the Overlake Zone Regulations Public Hearing.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. For the record, my name is Katie Kenville. I've been before you several times at this point. I wanted to comment on two specific items in the Overlake Regulations for, that are being discussed tonight. The first is kind of a technical item on Table 210403OC, which is the comprehensive land use chart. I just wanted to comment that it's a little confusing and may conflict a little bit with the discussions on the remainder of Overlake zoning and the centers element. So I'd ask staff to kind of look at that to reconcile that as it relates specifically to multifamily housing and whether standalone residential is allowed in OV and, and OBAT. Footnote four, which specifically says that standalone residential buildings are prohibited in OV and OBAT, only applies to senior housing and not to the rest. I, I think it's great not to apply it to, you know, the rest of OV, but I assume that may be a mistake, and I just, I'm asking reconciliation. When you consider that, as per my comments on the centers element, I, I certainly believe that standalone residential buildings, whether age restricted or open to all ages, should be allowed in the OV and OBAT zones. And we can regulate them through mixed use requirements for ground floor uses on certain streets where it makes sense and allow for flexibility when that makes sense. But at a minimum, it should be reconciled with those remaining elements. The next thing I wanted to talk about are a couple of the definitions that are in RVC 2178 for, for proposal. The first is that the city is defining a live-work unit for the first time. I think it's good to provide clarity. It's been a, a source of confusion in, in Redmond for quite some time. Unfortunately, I think the definition, which states that a live-work unit is going to be considered a residential unit, both conflicts with past decisions in Marymore projects where live-work units were specifically considered commercial uses. And we believe it's the wrong policy direction. So we've asked the Planning Commission to consider a definition of live-work units that allows them to be classified as a commercial use in the Land Use Code. I think in the past, the staff has correctly pointed out that the Building Code, the IBC, considers live-work units as a residential occupancy. However, Building Code occupancy doesn't require a particular land use designation, especially for purposes of street use or mixed use requirement. For example, Seattle classifies live-work as commercial for most of its purposes in the Land Use Code, even though the Building Code considers it a residential occupancy. So it's something to consider. And I guess, why does this matter? And, and I think in short, smaller spaces provide a lower barrier for entry for smaller retailers. And that's what live-work provides are smaller retail spaces. Small retail spaces with limited build-outs are also overall easier to lease than bigger spaces. So it, it means that we may not have as many empty storefronts, and it's easier to lease. We have several clients that know this from past experience, and they hear it from retail brokers all the time as well. Personal services like salon or barbershop uses have proven particularly successful in this typology. I will provide written comments that show several successful examples of live-work units. Sometimes they fail. I want to be perfectly honest. But I, I think they can also succeed with the right regulations. So we ask the commission to consider that as they go forward. And then lastly, in terms of the rest of the definitions relating to Overlake incentives, many of the definitions appear to provide both policy and sometimes regulatory requirements. And in a couple of cases, do not define the, the term in the definition section. For example, the definition of affordable commercial is tied to the incentives for Overlake regulations. And we believe that the, to the extent it's providing regulation, it should be included in that regulatory section when that becomes available to review. And some definitions, such as legacy business, also impart a policy and not really a definition. And some do provide both policy and definition. And I, I just would ask the Planning Commission to think about what the definition section is for. And in my view, it should be very focused on, here's the defined term and not adding regulations or policies so someone doesn't miss that. And I don't think that was the intent, but that's just something that I would recommend you look at as you go forward with this. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Katie. I would encourage you to send your comments as a written comment so that we capture all the details. It was very technical.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anymore, Ian? Okay. With that, I will close the verbal part of the public hearing and keep the written part open.
Okay, at this point, what we can do is we can go through your existing issues matrix, and we can add on any new items if you'd like.
Yeah, I would like to make sure that particularly Katie's comments were captured in the, I mean, I encouraged her to send us a written comment, and I think she will. But I think she had some issues that I'd like to see captured in the issues matrix.
No problem. We'll make sure to get them on there.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead and.
Kim, do you want to share screen?
Absolutely. I'll go ahead and share the issues matrix now. Okay, here we go. So the first item in the issues matrix regarding this package is one from Commissioner Parna. And this was requesting a lighter approach to the art selection. Staff was able to review this with the arts administrator. And we believe that what is provided is a general set of criteria that allows for broad discussion by the Arts Commission. And it also, as being part of the code that would have an underlying land use permit involved, would also include an appeal process if, in the end, the developer, the landmark commission, the design review board, were not able to resolve any issues that would remain. So you can see here, item one and two under this do lay out a very broad set of criteria that the Arts Commission has used. The, the, the regulations that are being proposed to include have been in place since 2017. They were reviewed by the city council and approved to be what is called the interim process for review of privately developed public art. This has been used in several locations throughout Marymore and a few also in the downtown.
Commissioner Parna?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Kim. So I had a couple of questions. I understand why this is there, but I, like, for me, and I would like to kind of throw it out there for the rest of the commission as well. Relationship to, so Part A and, I want to say Part A and Part D, which is relationship to other existing artwork and appropriateness of artwork to other aspects. I see art as something which is a, which shouldn't be overpoliced, right? So for me, when we talk about how it should relate, that means all our art would be in the same ballpark. We're not going to get anything different. Because they will, the requirement is one of a continued aesthetic or a continued theme, right? So I'm just curious what the rest of the commissioners think about those.
That's the, Commissioner Weston?
So I thought this was so interesting. And based on an earlier comment, I kind of went and looked at what's actually happening in the Art Commission meetings. Am I using the right term? I think I am.
Arts and Culture Commission.
Thank you. Arts and Culture Commission meetings, which are all similar to Planning Commission on the Redmond website. And I just, I don't think policing is the right framework for thinking about this. What I'm seeing it as more of a, it's certainly a process, but it's a lot more collaborative and it's a lot more thoughtful. And it, it just doesn't seem like there's this level of disagreement that seems to be showing up in this question. So I was actually curious, Commissioner Parna, if there's anything, if there are examples of this going awry that are the basis of your question, or if it's just a general resistance to like, it seems heavy-handed. Because my, my take on what I was seeing in that commission is that it's not heavy-handed.
Thanks, Commissioner Weston. So here is where I'm seeing it. We're going to have a lot more building, and we're going to have a lot more publicly designed space. That's what we are requiring of all our centers. So for me, a vibrant center is something where there are surprises. And I'm concerned that this, this might lead to a consistency, not there right now, but given what we expect to as increased density, I, I am concerned about it. But if the rest of the commission isn't, then I'll let it go. Because I, I see it as the vibrancy comes. Because I see it as the vibrancy comes from expressing some level of individuality. As long as there are some very broad parameters, we shouldn't tie it to past or present, it should just be there. That's how I see art. Now, it's a very personal definition, as I can tell.
Right. I think that's the job of the Arts and Culture Commission. That's why we have an Arts and Culture Commission.
But having it tied to existing artwork in the vicinity is basically saying it has to react either as a contrast or in conjunction. Why does it have to react to anything?
I don't think that's how the Arts and Culture Commission reads this.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, for me, that part and the other part which stood out for me was the artist's credentials and recognition. An unknown artist could make their mark. Why should we have somebody, if a developer's putting forth a project, it's on the developer to see it through, right? I'm just curious what people think.
Again, I think this is just, these are some of the criteria that the Arts and Culture, they don't, it's not that it has to check off every box. I think you should, if you go and watch an Arts and Culture Commission meeting, I think you will understand how they actually apply this process.
Okay, I should do that, but then we can close this.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll note that as closed. And just to reiterate, some of the things that are part of this recommendation do address the installation of art. So the credentials do come in when you think about a large piece and how it relates to being in a public realm. For example, if children were to climb on it, want to make sure that it is a safe environment. So our building, our building code actually comes into play here as well. Item number two.
Excuse me, can I just ask a quick question? I'm so sorry. I am curious about how public art is financed. I know some jurisdictions require 1% for art, so I don't know what the city Redmond does.
I believe we do have that program as well. This art is privately developed locations, and it would be an investment by that developer to provide the art. An option to provide 1% could be discussed as part of this, but in most cases, what we are looking for is as part of new development to provide that activation of space at the ground floor.
And I guess, what I'm curious about is, this sets up some parameters in terms of where art might be accomplished. And I guess I'm curious to know if there is a way to perhaps ensure that art will be provided. And so, for example, the idea of a 1% for art program, and then leave it up to the Arts and Cultures Commission and the public, you know, the private developer working consort with one another to carry that forward.
I can, I can add that to the issues matrix and get a response back to you on that from our arts administrator. Yeah, thank you. All right. Item number two is artist statement, description, or interpretation to be included. And this is something that is softly spoken to in the recommended code, but what can be discussed a little bit further is further emphasis on including that. Very often, what happens is that a public art piece is recognized as part of the collection and therefore is going to have information. You might have information provided through a QR code at the actual location, then it can link you to our webpage. But you might also have a catalog that allows you to walk around and look at the different public arts in place, and then that is where you would find the information. So what I will do, and have already done so actually, provide this to the arts administrator, and he can then discuss with the Arts and Culture Commission. I'm not sure if this would necessarily need to be called out, the bullets that I have here, those are just examples, but what I'll do is if I can leave this open and provide additional information to you, if you like.
Commissioner Weston?
So I actually don't need it to stay open. I just, I think this is the sort of data that's really hard to go back and collect later. Like, if there's one spot where it all gets kept, then it's more likely that over time you build something that, that you can create, something like the current downtown art walk or some of the poetry walks, or it's just having all of that in one place. And some of, this could be very lightweight, like, it could be like, this mural was installed when the building was built in 2016. Like, it doesn't necessarily have to be like a full report that you open up for each thing. Probably shouldn't be, but just having that piece of, like, we have this huge catalog of public art, and it just, people can do all sorts of things with that.
Yes.
So as long as that's registered, then I'm happy to close.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. I was going to say that the application material, if you look on our webpage at our call for artists, the application material does require a statement to be included, and so the information would be available, provided that they went through that service. So it is possible to merge those two a little bit tighter. But this item, you said, is closed? Okay, wonderful, thank you. Just note that here as well. All right. Item number three is performance spaces, and this is one that isn't clearly called out, but it is something that is a possibility. If a developer were to propose to include a public space for the expression of art, that would meet the definition of public art. And what that would mean then is that the developer, the property manager, the city, there would need to be a partnership that came out of that development to ensure the long-term use of that space for that purpose. So that's the only caution that I wanted to note for this one, that it would be an operational practice more than an installation practice.
Commissioner Weston?
Just wondering if that could ever be folded into the recreation department's rental policy, because I think right now, it's not obvious, like, what's, what public space is available for private use. But that system is already up and running and it works pretty well.
The rental system is, yes, that's correct.
Thanks.
Were there any other questions on this item?
No. Do you want to keep it open or close it? Close it.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to design standards. Commissioner Aparna noted some concerns about the use of a material that produces glare. Her example was in Los Angeles. Staff was able to look into this and confirm that, yes, in fact, there was an installation of a metallic material used at different angles and ended up producing significant impacts to the neighboring properties by way of glare. What our zoning code has today are two things in place, and I included those in the issue matrix. One is that building materials should minimize light reflection and glare. So a recommendation for something like that, which is, I believe this was in the Overlake neighborhood today, could be to strengthen the should to a shall, that building materials shall minimize the light reflection and glare. And I say that minimizing should be maintained because all building materials can produce some amount of light and glare, so we can't completely avoid it, but what we can do is staff to review the materials and to make sure that they, at minimum, are looking to minimize those. There are special treatments you can use, like sandblasting etching, that could help minimize and still allow you to use a material like metal. In another part of the code, I did find something a little bit stronger, so we can use that as an example, where it is specifically calling out certain materials that would not be supported by way of glare. I do caution against prohibiting materials, because one of the things we've realized is that different material comes along quite frequently, and we wouldn't want to prohibit an innovative material that possibly might be more sustainable than others, but it gives staff that clear direction. And then finally, another thing that we are adding to our design regulations and standards is a clear purpose statement. So in the case of material, we can very clearly call out this minimizing the light and glare, and that way, if an alternative is proposed by the developer, we look to that purpose statement and weigh whether that alternative still carries out the purpose of that particular standard.
Commissioner Aparna?
This is fantastic, Kim. I think this is perfect, because I think we don't want to be overly prescriptive, but we want to make sure that nobody else is facing the thing. This is great. But envelope design is also a little bit more as well, and I don't know if that gets added here, so I'm just going to give you more examples because, so envelope design, like, the word says it's the entire, like, outside of the building. So specifically, I was thinking more along the lines of, you know, overhangs, vertical fins for shading, so all the different shading techniques will add to, how do I put this? Will add to the efficiency of the building, especially if shaded correctly. Energy usage drops significantly on the inside, cooling especially. So wall and shading systems, fenestration designs, which have the old-school, you know, Riz Soleil, which is basically like the recessed things that, was, you showed us pictures of this in the, in the open houses at Derby Days, where you have the recessed balconies and stuff so that you don't get in glare so much, and like, and it's also good for making sure that the heat doesn't enter the building, so it's shaded. So all of this is part of the envelope design. We can go as far as the rooftop as well. So wall, anything related to the outer kind of envelope, lack of better word. So that's something that, we don't have to get into details of materials, but more in terms of envelope design can help with, you know, breaking down a form, for instance, can reduce energy usage for cooling, for instance. So we could give examples of what a good envelope can do, and then developers can meet that, instead of telling them exactly how to achieve it, right? These are just thoughts which should be there ideally, because in all of our discussions, we don't talk enough about passive methods, and envelope design is a significant passive method to reduce our energy usage. Does that make sense, or is it very garbled?
No, you're coming through clear. Thank you very much for clarifying that, and I would like to defer to Becky on the Overlake portion. What was showed at Derby Days was actually for the downtown, which could ultimately inform some of our other neighborhoods, but in this case, during this public hearing, I want to defer to Becky on design standards for Overlake.
Yeah, I do want to point out that there's a number of different conversations happening around community design, and we know that there were some pieces that we wanted to just move forward with Overlake and get it done, but there's other things that are happening from a citywide and downtown conversation that will be important and may impact or add on to what we're doing today.
Okay.
So the biggest thing is, we wanted to go ahead and, as we put new building forms and more urban standards and development, like, into Overlake, go ahead and update at least some of those design standards, but there will be ongoing conversations about design standards that we can add on to. So even if it's not 100% right now, it could continue and be built out more completely next year. But there is, there is an opportunity to do so, and I think that your comment about building envelope was very well taken. It's not something that we did consider with the Overlake regulations. We kept that really very short list of what was going to go with this package on purpose. But it is something that, as we have time over the next years, we have continuing, ongoing conversations about community design, especially as we start to go in, we're going to be going out with our first draft of our community design policies, and we're going to have regulations that back up the work in that chapter. So there is ongoing conversations about design that we can definitely pull in that building envelope conversation into.
Thank you, Becky. And just to be very clear, I'm not looking to, like, the way I see something like the shaping up is not something too prescriptive.
Right.
But to say, hey, you know what, these are the things which will make good design, you know? And the whole point is that it's also, it's performance, it's aesthetics, it's comfort, both inside and outside, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know how you would phrase it without sounding prescriptive. Good luck on that, but, yeah.
But what we could do is, with this agenda item, we can just say, we will continue this conversation with the next piece that we're doing.
Okay.
Because I do think it will take us a little bit of time to figure out what that would look like or be, and work through the language on that.
Right. I just want to add one more pitch, if you aren't sold already. They did a study in India on what is the single biggest factor to reduce the heat inside a building, okay? And they found that just painting the roofs white, with a particular shade of white, reduced the heat entry into the building significantly, by 30, 40%. Okay? So that's, for me, that's effective envelope design. It may not, they didn't change the shape of the roof or anything, but they just painted that thing white. So what I'm trying to get at is, it doesn't have to be intrusive either, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's all. Thanks.
So, Kim, for the issues matrix, we'll just say that we'll fold this conversation into some of the other ongoing work on community design. And then are you okay to close this for this issues matrix, Aparna?
Absolutely, thank you, yeah. As long as we can continue it.
Right, okay.
So, thank you.
I want to back up, because we skipped over an item on the previous, if we back up, there was an item four there.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, no, it's part closed. It's not marked closed on mine.
You know what, no, that was my mistake.
Okay.
That meant to go with the previous item right here.
Right.
Yes, so let's address that one, item four. This was also from Commissioner Aparna, and it was asking for confirmation that there are non-hate provisions, and we, staff was able to confirm that, in fact, at the city level, there is a resolution 1534 that was adopted in 2020 that addresses this and would prohibit the investment in art or a process that involved hate speech. It's a more lengthy resolution, I encourage looking at it when you have a moment, but to answer your question, there is something in place to protect against hate speak.
Thank you. I think as long as this is legally binding, it is, right? So then we can just close it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
With that, are there other questions to add to the issue matrix?
Commissioner Weston?
I think we wanted to make sure we added the pieces from the public comment today.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we'll do that for your next one, so we have an opportunity to provide information about those comments.
Yeah.
Great. And that was specifically, the parts that I got were not including policy or regulation in the definitions, was one piece.
And there was
And then there was a question about live-work units being either commercial or residential.
Right.
And whether that is the same as Marymore or different for Overlake.
Right.
And then there was just one clarification that I don't think is necessarily for this about, a question about standalone housing in the charts, but I don't think that was for the issues matrix.
I'm sure Katie will follow up with written.
Yeah, and I do, I did have a chance while we were going through some of the other items to look, and she is correct, the footnote on 2104 was not updated to match the footnote on 2112. So I'll, in our next So I'll, in our next version, I'll just let you know that what that correction will be.
Yeah, she's, she's great at catching those typos and inconsistencies for us.
I very much appreciate it. But I will, I'll convey that information. But yes, it was just an inconsistency between the footnotes in 2112 and 2104.
Yeah. Okay, then we can move on
Okay.
to a new topic, Redmond 2050, Marymore and Southeast Redmond Study Session.
Okay, Sherry, just for the record, we're keeping public hearing open for verbal and written?
Uh, no, we will close for verbal and keep written open. I was.
Okay, thank you.
When we couldn't get Katie the first time, I wasn't sure whether, but then we got her, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we, we got that clear. Thank you.
Great.
Now, before we close this item, Becky and I did want to reiterate the public hearing just so that those who are listening from home and maybe tuned in a little bit later, that the public hearing for package or portion three of the Overlake regulations will not include the incentives. And this was the public hearing that was previously scheduled for August 30th. Did I get that correct, Becky?
Uh, we're just going to bump all of package three. So package three of three will get rescheduled.
Okay. Now, now we'll move on to Redmond 2050, Marymore and Southeast Redmond.
Sorry about that.
Becky?
Yeah, let me go ahead and open up that presentation. If my teams will cooperate with me. There we go.
Okay. So we have a first look at the policies for Marymore Village and Southeast Redmond. Some of these are coming out of our neighborhoods element. Some of these are coming out of different sections of our neighborhoods element. So bear with me, but all of these that we're looking at today are edits to or modifications to what is in our neighborhoods element, and some of them are moving to new chapters. So I'll walk you through that a little bit more. But it is, we're looking at those policies and new things that we need to add. Just a quick reminder, as we do every time we introduce the first draft of policies, we just remind everybody that we, how we got here has been like a year and a half process. We went through a number of different kickoff and visioning and thematic reviews, policy considerations, what we should be considering as we look at policies. All of that went into the work that led to the drafting of the policies that you see before you today, including our review for equity and inclusion. So that included a review of our existing policies through our modern scan. And just a reminder for those of our newer planning commissioners, modern is a term that we just use as an acronym to describe if it was misplaced, outdated, if it was really confusing. So we had a number of different terminologies. I'm not going to bring that up, but if you're interested in what all went into the modern scan, it was just trying to find things that didn't belong there anymore. If it was duplicative, shouldn't be in the comp plan at all, should just be in regulations or in some other document. We just tried to streamline it. So a lot of the identification of what policies should stay, and then if they should stay, what modifications we need, happened through the modern scan. And then we looked at anything we needed to add, either because it was a policy requirement coming out of some type of state or regional policy planning. We looked at our related adopted plans that are in place, and then again, through all of the visioning and thematic reviews that we did from Redmond 2050. So it led us to where we are today with policy considerations for you. So again, as we do every time we bring a first draft, is we just want to check and see if we're on the right track. Are we thinking that these policies really support the direction that we've identified as part of Redmond 2050, vision and goals? And again, very specifically, we're bringing back our Redmond 2050 themes. Do you feel it aligns with and supports our goals for equity and inclusion, sustainability and resiliency? So those are the questions that we're asking for the planning commission and the public right now, and then we'll do this first review, and then we'll potentially edit and modify and bring back a second draft. So the policy drivers were primarily making sure that we were reflecting the new centers, topologies and opportunities. There was a significant discussion and prioritization of protecting employment opportunities, especially those that provide living wage, family wage jobs, accommodating growth and all legislative requirements, especially for affordable housing, and then again, our themes. So a lot of the policy drivers that you'll see today are in response directly to those. They're not new or unique policy drivers, but they definitely had a significant impact in Southeast Redmond. So for Southeast Redmond, just a placeholder map for you to put in your head as you're starting to think about this and we're looking at the policies we're discussing tonight. Marymore Village is there in the pink. What is being proposed for the jobs center, whatever we're going to call it, is there in gray. What is not a center but is also going to be discussed today is what staff has lovingly referred to as the donut hole, as what goes in between, that happens to be in our regional retail zoning district. So these are the things we're talking about today as the first look of policies for Southeast So one of just the high level things that we look at obviously is making sure that we're getting rid of things that are outdated. And that included a lot of language in Marymore Village about, Marymore Village being established or make sure that this is created, establish these zoning districts and all of the type of language. And so that resulted in a number of edits for Marymore and some just straight up deletions because things have been completed and are no longer needing. We also have some things that we're proposing because we are moving Marymore Village into the centers section of our new community design chapter so that the general centers policies will now be applicable to Marymore as well. And that's new because Marymore will no longer be a local center, but it will be a countywide center. So there's some streamlining benefits to doing that as well because then what is specific to Marymore can be a lot smaller. So just from a general perspective, and again, the Redmond 2050 themes had a pretty significant impact in Marymore in particular. So diving into Marymore, as I mentioned, there's some establishment language. There is a couple of things in here related to new policies for pilot projects. So as we've mentioned at previous planning commission conversations for Marymore, what we are looking to do is create Marymore as a pilot neighborhood for what an inclusive neighborhood could look like. And so there's some policy language in there that creates that and allows us to establish that. We had also previously talked about the idea of helping establish a unique sense of place for Marymore by bringing in the native arts and other pieces that actually honor and reference and bring actually into the physical design of the community how important this area is to our local tribes historically, today and ongoing into the future. And it could be through art, it could be through landscaping, it could be through interpretive signage, and there's a number of different ideas that are being explored that we'll be working out through what that would look like from a tribal perspective. Again, it's not necessarily saying you shall do X, Y, and Z, and it's not requiring a lot of review from the tribes themselves because they don't have staffing for that. But trying to find easy ways that as development comes in, we can provide tools that bring that to life. So the policies are going to be establishing that to be created. The Arts and Culture Commission is going to be really involved in setting that through and establishing and making it work. We are also asking of the community in particular one question because one of the policies that was established within 2017 when Marymore Village was created was there was a cap on general retail and service uses so that in theory, it wouldn't drive out the manufacturing. But we're walking through that particular question with the property owners, and they've requested some additional information. So we're working with that on if that's something that we feel should stay or if it is okay to go ahead and lift that at this time. So that's what we're, the bigger pieces, but there are also, some next steps I wanted to point out. We are, and it's not the policies, this is going to be moving forward in play, we do have zoning updates that will happen in Marymore Village and not in, not as many changes inside the core of Marymore Village, but we are looking at potentially a zoning consolidation so that there are five Marymore Design Districts today, maybe we'll have less. They are very similar in some cases, and then it goes in line with the city's direction to minimize our zoning districts wherever we can. And we're also taking the general commercial strip, which is the strip between the Smamish Trail and Redmond Way, and actually taking that from commercial to mixed use. So there are some zoning changes that will be coming into Marymore. There are also some design guideline updates, and as I mentioned, we're doing some tribal coordination. We're doing a lot of stakeholder feedback over the next couple of months, especially what that pilot neighborhood will look like. What is an inclusive neighborhood actually look like, and what do we want to put that into play and how? We also have some work to do on the incentives updates for Marymore as well. For the Industrial Manufacturing Center, just a reminder, that is a term that is used at the county level. We can come up with our own name, and I've got a slide in a minute that will help. But this is just a, I've added this slide, this is a change from what was in your pocket. I'm going to repost or revise, but this was based on a conversation we had earlier this week to help from a context standpoint. We had originally had a larger boundary proposed, but after community input, we did remove the CIM group property, which some of you are familiar, came in as an annual docket item and asked to be considered. And there's some other context for that that we might come back at another meeting and talk about. But that property was removed and all other MP overlay properties were removed. The cemetery, the mobile home park, all of that was, was pulled out. And so we do have a revised boundary. We are not looking to establish a new industrial and manufacturing area. All we're doing is taking those existing areas and adding policies to make sure that it creates the center from, we're creating a brand new center, and it will remove the pressure to convert to housing, so by making it not allowed to convert to housing. And so that will protect that as a job area. Several comments were received and questions and concerns of the planning commission were brought up. Clarification, we are going to be changing and clarifying language to remove the confusion around the uses that are allowed in the CARA. And then again, there's going to be some streamlining from that area as well. I just again, want to remind everybody, we're not changing the zoning, it will remain the We do have a question though about what should this be called because Industrial and Manufacturing Center has caused some confusion because people think we're doing heavy industry or something along those lines. So we've talked about it, job center, employment center, is it manufacturing? Some folks have thrown out green industry, innovation district. I think at another meeting earlier, we, somebody pulled out urban industry. So there's a couple of different ideas. We just wanted to throw open for planning commission if you have any thoughts about what we should be calling that. It'll still be classified at a county level as a countywide industrial and manufacturing growth center, just because that is what it's called at the county center, does not mean we have to use that terminology in our nomenclature.
You looking for input now?
Yeah, if you have any, otherwise we can keep going.
We have a bunch of people with hands up. Commissioner Weston was first.
Hey there. So I have a very strong reaction to this. I sincerely believe that it is better to use the words that we actually mean not to make it sound good. I firmly do not think that green innovation or anything that's euphemistic is helpful here. To me, jobs or employment center sounds like a mall. I don't think that's what you're looking for. I think if, one of my actually biggest feedbacks, pieces of feedback on this is I don't think the definition of industrial or the definition of manufacturing is very clear, but that seems to be what we're driving towards, so I would like to see definitions for those and then to use those words. But that's my opinion.
All right. Thank you for your input.
I think Commissioner Van Nyman?
I, I would just add some adjectives, right? I mean, these are light industrial, light manufacturing type stuff, right?
Yes.
So I think that's helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Aparna?
I, I think the light is, is very good, if you want to keep it that way. But if you want to get a little whimsical, I have a couple of ideas. We could go with maker and doer because it's, it's more like we're going to make and we're going to do. The maker is a, is a sort of a point to a more forward-looking technology creation kind of space, creating kind of space. So I don't know, that's more whimsical, but I, I like the simple light industrial manufacturing.
Commissioner Wood.
Keep it simple. Yeah.
My sentiment, my, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
My sentiments are similar to Susan. I have a visceral reaction to this, and the issue that I have is that's a lot of, I'm not, first of all, I'm not a namesmith or whatever that word would be, and I think we should call it what it is. It's an industrial and manufacturing employment center. I don't think we should play with, with adjectives and lights and euphemisms and, and fonts and colors and stuff. It is what it is. And if you change the name of it, then you have to commit to spending a lot of time defining it and educating it around it. So it is what it is. Longtime residents, even new residents would, would recognize it as industrial and manufacturing. It is what it is. All the examples that we see here are not expansive enough to include the fact that there's manufacturing, there's businesses, there's job centers. So they're just components of it. And so I move the opinion it doesn't work. I think the most inclusive, the most expansive is what you have at the top, and that is the Industrial and Manufacturing Employment Center. It is what it is.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. Okay, well, we'll keep going, but we're definitely going to return to discuss policies later, From an implementation timing, just wanted to clarify, what we're doing in Redmond 2050 is establishing the center. We're definitely going to clarify the uses in the CARA. That will happen as a part of Redmond 2050. There is additional work that will occur after Redmond 2050. We are not the approver of this center type, the county will be. So we have to submit to the county, and they will in 2025 undergo a review process, and they will let us know at some point, probably 2026, if they will approve this as a center. We've had many, many conversations leading up to this. It's not something that, it's new to them. We had to apply for permission to study in Redmond 2050, but we do have to go through a review and approval process to get it regionally acknowledged as a countywide center. We are also going to be doing a neighborhood plan update. After Redmond 2050 closes, we have to look at the neighborhood plan, and there's a number of different things that will have to happen in that area, and that will probably also include some type of corridor study. We'll look at the uses along Redmond Way, we'll look at the MP overlay, if that needs to change or be rezoned. Anything along that corridor, we've heard tonight, the biking is a concern. It's not the first time we've heard that the pedestrian and bike connections in that area need improvement. So we need the time and resources to develop to actually study that as a neighborhood plan and a corridor, and that will happen after Redmond 2050 is wrapped up. So what we're looking at tonight from the industrial center perspective is just the policies that are for the area inside what was shown on the map. Everything that is not shown in the map, there's some additional work that will need to happen. Also in Southeast Redmond is this regional retail zoning district. So as a part of meeting our affordable housing requirements, one of the biggest tools that we could do was taking a look at changing our regional retail zoning district from big box to mixed use. So what we're showing tonight is the beginning of that work and what that would look like from a policy edit standpoint. So what we're showing tonight is the beginning of that work and what that would look like from a policy edit standpoint. From a context, this is where Kohl's and Target and Fred Meyer occur. There's a lot of parking in that area. There's also a number of other stores as well. And it does not include the, but it is across the street from the cemetery. So it is surrounded by what will be the industrial center and Marymore and downtown. It is also edged by the freeway and 202. So one of the things that we have to do is change the intent of this zoning district. So the policy statement that leads to, and we'll see it's on the left, is what is there today? It's looking at retail and it's looking at all sorts of other things that don't actually happen there from regional offices and headquarters and warehousing. We want to continue to allow the regional retail zoning district to be a commercial area. And that is really, really important. But so what we're doing is keeping a lot of that language, at least proposing at the first draft, to keep a lot of that language, but add in an update to the neighborhood plan to implement a transition to go to mixed use and encouraging infill and redevelopment. We are looking at urban format for big box stores and I'll show you a picture a little bit later about what we mean by that. But it's important to keep that retail, keep that component there in that particular area because it serves a need in our community. We're just looking at how we can infill and add some redevelopment for mixed use. As we do that, it does give us an opportunity, especially as we look to redevelop a lot of those large parking lots. This is an area with very low tree coverage and we have a tree coverage goal in the city. We can utilize this as an opportunity to achieve some of those environmental benefits, including ways that we can maybe pull in rain gardens and other types of things. So we are proposing a policy that encourages taking advantage of those and leading towards implementing some of our ESAP goals. We are also creating a policy that will establish and open the door for big ideas. And this would continue after Redmond 2050, but we need to establish a policy that would allow that conversation to occur. What that is looking at is specifically to the pedestrian bicycle connections to downtown and Marymore and obviously the center next to it with the employment center. It is an area that is difficult to get to when you're walking around your bike and some of the ideas that have been proposed include really big ideas, like do we just want to take down the end of the freeway? Do we want to re-initiate the pedestrian overpass conversation? Do we want to do maybe a park over the roadway cap or something? Just open the idea for brainstorming of big ideas because some of the big ideas take decades to implement. And so the policy is being added in Redmond 2050 to open that conversation. And we will continue and have the specific conversation of do we want to pursue big ideas as a part of the neighborhood plan update that will happen after Redmond 2050. So those are two things that are unique that are going to be happening in this section. Are there any questions on these?
Don't see any.
Okay. So here's just the examples I mentioned earlier. These I actually just pulled from Seattle Times. I just pulled up, I said, what's been coming in lately? And these are just some examples of Target stores that have been coming into our area. So again, we don't want to necessarily push Target out, but we would like to potentially have Target redevelop into an urban format, so. From the implementation perspective, we are going to be revising the zoning district policies and the zone itself. That is going to be required as showing our work to meet our growth targets, our affordable housing targets. And then as I mentioned, after Redmond 2050, we're going to have to do a neighborhood plan update. That neighborhood plan update may potentially include master planning, the regional retail zoning district, to help manage the process for the transition into mixed use infill and redevelopment. So the work of the full implementation will not happen with Redmond 2050. It will continue after Redmond 2050. So what's next for the Southeast Redmond policies in general? We're going to be going through community engagement this summer and fall. We anticipate having a second draft of policies to at the turn of the year. We are going to start looking at code updates and what that might be entailed to implement these policies. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be updating the incentive program for Marymore and downtown. So there's some work that we have to do about identifying what do we want to incentivize in Marymore? And how we would want that to look a little bit different from what we might want to incentivize in Overlake or downtown. So there's some, those are some of the next steps that we're going to be moving forward with. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of community conversations and stakeholder and property owner specific conversations, especially where some major changes are happening. So that will commence and that will take several months as we go through that process. So that is all I have for you tonight unless you have any questions.
Do you have questions? Commissioner Weston.
Hi, so I had a few things that came up for me when I was reading it. One of the big questions I had was around the bike pedestrian access and where that stops. Because at a certain point, either there isn't the density to support it or it becomes a safety concern to have people mingling in with trucks. But I was having a hard time on the map seeing, like basically where, where do we want to promote pedestrian bike safety and access and infrastructure? And when are we sort of like this really, there isn't a safe way to do this that's feasible, so we're not addressing it now. In my mind, there's probably a dotted line somewhere and it probably includes like the Bear Creek Park and Ride and parts of what we're looking at here, but it's not clear to me from the policies or what was presented where that line would be.
Yeah, I know that our transportation planning folks have been really diving into this. So I would love to see if we can get some feedback from that team and we can bring back or maybe even ask them to, if they'd be willing to come chat with you about that.
Yeah, and like usually we talk about things like walk sheds or like complete neighborhoods and this, this area doesn't fit that, so it's not really necessarily what we're looking for, but it just seems like there's some missing either language or definition. Maps, I'm not sure, but just something where we're like, here's where we're really focusing on that goal and here's where it actually could be counterproductive.
Great. So let me pull Vangie and her team in and we'll, we'll get some follow-up on that topic for you. Thank you.
That is awesome. And just one more. I had questions about the central sub area and what that even means. Sometimes I thought I was reading it as the industrial manufacturing employment center. Sometimes I thought I was reading it as Marymore Village.
Yeah.
Or the entire area on the map that was on the first page. Like I have no idea what it means.
We're trying to get rid of those references. But if we missed one, I'll go back through and clean it up, but that is a a artifact of our current comprehensive plan. So it takes the Southeast Redmond neighborhood and divides it into sub areas. And so the bulk of the industrial manufacturing center exists within that center sub area. And so we're trying to strike that reference entirely.
Okay.
And move forward with not having sub areas. Similar to what we did with Overlake, we removed the sub area conversation just because it got confusing.
Right.
But yeah, what I can do is I can get to you for reference so you can see what it is referring to, the map that's in our current comprehensive plan that identifies what each of those areas are, just so that you have that as a reference.
That'd be amazing. Thank you.
Commissioner Aparna.
Thanks Becky. I just had a question for the the Southeast area for industrial and manufacturing. Would the sort of manufacturing slash retail of the same thing be allowed? Is that?
There is in our policies, where in the regulations, there is an allowance for a certain area. If they're manufacturing, they can have a, an area for selling what they're manufacturing on site. It is limited. I'd have to look at the code to see exactly what that is. But yeah, there is a provision. If they want to sell onsite, they can.
Okay.
It just limits the amount of space that they can use, do that.
Thank you.
I had a question about policy. In SE 31, particularly in light of, this is in the retail area, particularly in light of discussing how we were trying to move away from sort of the big box and more urban typology for the retail stores. And it says minimize views of large areas of asphalt by various forms. It would seem that we would want to minimize large areas of asphalt.
I'm sorry, what was the policy number again, Chair?
In SE 31.
Thirty-one.
It's in the regional retail or whatever area.
Yeah, let me just do it this way. There we go.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh.
Lost it.
Sorry, lost it. Okay. Alright, so you're thinking modify the language to just talk about?
Oh, we were talking, yeah, you put up the pictures of like the, the more urban style targets and stuff like that. You know, it looked like, it would seem to me that a more congruent policy would be to actually minimize large areas of asphalt rather than minimizing views of large areas of asphalt.
Got it. Yep. Yeah, and we could just say urban.
Yeah.
Building forms. Okay. Nope, I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Weston.
So I had a few more. On NSE 27, I wondered if we could be more specific about the natural features that we want to protect? Because I think there are real specific things here. So Bear Creek, the Cara, like what are we, like the trees that we're hoping to plant? I think actually listing those out would make this a much stronger policy.
Okay.
And then the NSE 28, I really, I want to be like completely on board with the idea of getting rid of the big box. And I'm also so aware of how many people rely on having Home Depot and Target and even Kohl's like right near, I shouldn't say even, but like it's just people use those stores. And that you can go to the parking lot at pretty much any time of day when they're open and you can see that people are using those stores. So I was just, I'm worried that mixed is just not going to be quite is, might not provide actually the space for that sort of feature. So I don't know if there's a way to set minimums or somehow encourage those to still exist.
We've had a number of conversations about that and that will end up being reflected in the code. So one of the things that we're looking at is maybe there's a way that we can say when you redevelop, don't do any less commercial space than what you have started with? Or something along those lines. So we still have the square footage for that space because you're right, that is something that staff thought of immediately. Right? We don't want this to redevelop to look the same as what we see in downtown where it's all housing with maybe a little thing on the front that means story.
Yeah, or a small retail that you couldn't actually fit like a larger use into.
Yeah.
So I'm so glad you're thinking of it. That's great.
Yeah, we do want to balance it because we do want to allow smaller retail to come in and today that's really not allowed. We want to encourage creative reuse of buildings too, obviously. So there's a number of different things that we're thinking about that will end up seeing in the code itself.
Okay, perfect. And then, sorry.
Commissioner Aparna.
Yeah, just jumping on that one, I completely agree with Commissioner Weston on this. I mean, we don't want to lose these, right? So there are a couple of things that we need to think about. If you want to reduce the asphalt, we are going to rely on bigger cars, trucks or what have you vehicles because we're not going to bike there to Home Depot. Okay?
Right.
I, so, so the whole point is there's a transportation piece here that is not necessarily buses either, right? We're looking at some kind of shuttle system or something like that where people can actually cart big things. And think Costco or think Home Depot. We're not, the toilet paper alone will not fit in on a bicycle, okay? So, so from a perspective of the asphalt, maybe we need to kind of talk about it in terms of either a mass transit system that is sort of customized like shuttles or vans and with pickup. And so that's part of the transportation thing. And secondly, if we do have parking and stuff that we need for, you know, individual vehicles and trucks, maybe it's a, it's a more like tiered parking garage, right? So you do clear up surface lots. Primarily it's, we need surface area off, right? Or we have, you know, a surface area parking lot, but a structure on top where you have the smaller stores or something like that. But knowing that the smaller stores depend on foot traffic, it's, it's a complicated question, so we need to keep that in mind. And like, I like the idea of moving to that urban kind of box store thing, but we have to understand that these particular specialized stores cannot do with, we will lose a lot of usability if we shrink the sizes, right?
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why we think that a master planning process might be needed to fully implement this. Because there are a lot of different things that are, we have to take into consideration. We're still going to need loading dock spaces. There's still going to have impacts from that and noise from the trucks backing up are still going to, you know. So there's a lot of things that would need to be considered to fully implement this. And that's one of the reasons why we're, we're not saying that this will get done 100% in Redmond 2050. There's just a lot of work that would need to happen for that. But even something is ideas of making sure that like Home Depot can still run out trucks, you know, and that type of thing. So people can go take their stuff home and then bring it back and, you know, so there's a number of different ways that we could look at. And I know in a lot of the urban settings where those types of stores are going and they have delivery service that's attached to it as well, right? But there's so many different things that we just need to talk through that that master planning process would I think be beneficial. We just need to look at other tools that might also be helpful as well. And just maybe there's some things that we want to incentivize for the redevelopment of that area as well. So right now, we're not looking at incentive package outside of our centers, but maybe as a part of that neighborhood plan process and the master planning for this area transition, maybe that could come into play as well.
Right. And also like things like, and I know this is very early days, but some of the ideas could be like encourage more box stores. So then, you know, there's a combined garage, right? So less overall, you know, surface parking and maybe more shared resources like trucks and shuttles or whatever, right? So having more rather than less is another way of going about it instead of converting it differently. So, good luck.
It's definitely going to be something that we'll have to thread the needle carefully because we cannot lose this area and the purpose for this area because it serves, it does serve a vital need for our community. So it will be a different type of mixed use district than what you see in downtown for sure.
Yes. Thank you, Becky.
Commissioner Sheffron.
Thank you. I just have a quick question, maybe a word, I guess, that's sticking out for me that I'd like to get clarity on. So this is relates to NSE 27, so on the far right column, when you're talking about encouraging development that is sensitive to and complements natural features and you've got a couple of examples in parentheses. of examples in parentheses. And I'm wondering if it's, if you mean to say pervious pavement versus impervious?
Good catch.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weston.
This is my last one. For SC, or NSE 32, I was wondering if this can be expanded a little bit more. I've just been looking more into the details about some of the archaeological history in this area, specifically. And so just for those who don't have the background on it, there were a couple digs in Redmond in the 1960s where they found, on the Marymore site, where they found tools to 4,000 B.C. and 1,000 B.C., which is incredibly old. And then in 2008, there was an RT, Redmond Town Center situation where they ended up finding stone tools. It was a, it kind of unleashed an excavation that lasted seven years. But they found stone tools that are 10,000 years old, and that is just amazing. And what I would love to see this expanded to is not only an appreciation for the art, but actually, if there was ever, this is wishes and dreams, but if there was ever a way to work with the Burke Museum and basically make an East Side outpost, which is the U-Dub Archaeological Amazing Museum, to basically make an East Side outpost in Redmond on this site. I could just see this being like a field trips for schoolchildren. It's a required part of the Washington State curriculum. I just, I think there's so much to celebrate there, and people would be really interested because it's amazing. So I don't know if that's a policy-level thing, but I wanted to raise it.
Becky, did I understand from the presentation that the stakeholder outreach in the Marymore area is just getting started?
No. Well, we started in the spring.
Okay.
But we, we went through a couple of different things that we did in southeast Redmond. We decided to work on some other stuff and then developed the first draft of the policies. Now we're going to go back out for another round.
Okay.
So it will, it will pick back up, but it's not the first of the outreach.
Okay. Because my memory from when we did this back in 2017 and before, was that was a very robust group of stakeholders.
Yeah. And we've been communicating with them, and we had a specific focus group, and we've had a general open house, and we've talked to the businesses. And, you know, so there's definitely been a lot that we've been doing to maintain those connections and make sure that the property owners that were heavily involved in the 2017 process are also completely up to date and, and knowing that this is happening and participate in these engagements too. So I know we've talked to many of those same property owners. Can't guarantee everybody's tied in again this time around, but definitely that's been important to us because, yes, it's not, it wasn't that long ago that we created Marymore Village.
Great. Thanks. Anything else from commissioners? Okay. I think we'll let you go, Becky.
Okay. Thank you.
Staff and commissioner updates. Ian.
We got some for you. The PC schedule has more Overlake regulations coming next meeting on August 23rd. Tentatively, our schedule also includes a special meeting on August 30th. Because of some changes, we're still recalibrating if that's actually going to be used. Some of the agenda items have shifted, but we really want to make sure that we're making the most of our limited time in this big push of the projects. And some other delightful opportunities for planning commissioners to show up and chat with the community. Library outreach Wednesday, 8/16, 4:00 to 6:00 at Redmond Library. Long-range planning staff will be having conversations with our community about Redmond 2050. There will also be a Rockin' on the River Wednesday, 8/16, 6:00 p.m. at the Great Lawn next to Redmond, rain or shine, always an opportunity to have community conversations. We're also going to have a Pint with a Planner at Woodblock Restaurant on Cleveland Street on Thursday, August 17th, 4:30 p.m. to 7:00. There will be more long-range planning staff talking about Redmond 2050. And tomorrow, at City Hall, our Community Advisory Committee is going to have kind of a, a summer meet and greet, kind of a chat right here at the back patio at City Hall. So we've got snacks and refreshments, and we'll chat there before moving into the actual building itself, the City Hall Conference Center, or on Teams at 6:00 p.m. through 7:30 p.m. And the topic for that discussion will be climate resilience and sustainability. With that, I turn it back to the chair.
Great. I went to the last pint with the planner and enjoyed my ice cream and talking to, talking to community members. Any commissioner updates? Then I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.